We have one member calling in, so we're just making the connection to get started. Well, good evening and welcome to your town hall meeting. Whenever it's the hour of six thirty, I hereby call the meeting to order. And just to inform, my hall meetings will be broadcasting live. To get started, tonight's invocation will be given by Battalion Chief Jason Moore of the Green Valley Fire District, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor, Council, and everybody in the audience. I just have to get closer to it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Battalion Chief, thanks.
Good evening. Let us pray. Father McDaniel for you tonight, grateful for your unconditional love. In unprecedented times such as these, it is the comfort in your grace that gets us through. We pray for your protective hedge around our first responders. We pray that you fill our healthcare practitioners' minds with knowledge. We pray that you provide for those who have lost loved ones to this virus. We pray your restoring hand over cities and towns that are burning. Be with all of your children and have your will be done. We lift up our elected officials to you, and we ask that you instill in them the kind of leadership and resolve that is placed to keep our great town thriving. We pray that you guide our teachers, our aides, principals, and our superintendent as we work to navigate the rough seas of education. Lord, I pray that you meet those that need you right where they are. You are an awesome God. We give it all to you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Please join me.
My twenty-two thousandth life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Chief. Tonight, we have two proclamations that I'll be reading. I usually will come down there and take a picture, but because of social distancing, I will be staying up here tonight. But at this time... Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rockham.
Here.
Councilmember David.
Here.
Councilmember Dix.
Here.
Councilmember Lux.
Here.
Vice Mayor Egbert.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
One present.
Thanks. Thanks for the reminder. And the first presentation will be for Drowning Prevention Coalition Month. Ms. Jo Laten from the Advisory Council of the Drowning Prevention Coalition of Arizona. If you can come up to the podium. Whereas Arizona's future prosperity depends upon the long-term health, safety, and well-being of nearly 2 million children and teens in our state; and whereas drowning is a top cause of injury and death for children and teens in Arizona, affecting not only the victims, but also families, emergency personnel, and our society as a whole; and whereas child drownings are nearly 100% preventable; and whereas research-proven strategies can save lives, including constant and capable supervision, restricting access to water, use of life jackets, swimming lessons for adults and children at the appropriate age, and rapid emergency response, including CPR; and whereas awareness of the problem is just the first step; evidence-based programs to bring these strategies to families and the best way to save lives; whereas during the month of August, the Drowning Prevention Coalition of Arizona, in collaboration with state and local governments, community organizations, and private citizens, will be engaged in communities throughout Arizona in a coordinated, comprehensive response. Now therefore be resolved that I, Tom Murphy, the mayor of Salerita, on behalf of the town council, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2020 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Salerita on this 24th day of August 2020. And at this time, if you'd like to say a couple words.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Murphy and town council members. We really appreciate the opportunity to be down here tonight with you. Sadly, this summer has been kind of a weird summer, and we all know with the pandemic, and we've still seen 42 fatal drownings in the state of Arizona through July 31st. So drowning impact awareness month in August is all really very important to us. We're still want to stress that even though summer's coming to an end, we need to keep a focus on our efforts. So we really appreciate that you guys got on board with us again this year, and we really appreciate it very much.
Well, thanks for all the work you do to help present it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here, we're teaching with the students. Get a quick picture, please. Thanks. Next, I'll be presenting a proclamation declaring August 2020 as Child Support Awareness Month. Is Ms. Olivera? Yes. You join us in the podium. Nicole Olivera is the Outreach Coordinator, Project Specialist, REES Division of Child Support Services. Thanks for coming tonight. Whereas the Town of Salerita joins the nation and recognizes August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Arizona families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children; and whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and are better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life; and whereas the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services, DCSS, is robustly committed to putting Arizona's childrens first and to humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity; whereas strengthening individuals and families when the emphasis on fiscal responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future; and whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes diligent parents who spend time with their child and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now therefore be resolved that I, Tom Murphy, the mayor of Salerita, on behalf of the town council, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2020 as Child Support Awareness Month. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Salerita on this 24th day, August 2020. Thank you for being here. Anybody who'd like to share anything?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Murphy and all the council members and the Town of Salerita for supporting the department and proclaiming the month of Child Support Awareness Month. We really appreciate all of your great support and effort.
Thank you. And we'll grab a picture if you're ready. Thanks for coming, both of you, this evening. Next, we move to item number six, which is the approval of the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Our agenda's approved for this evening. Next, we come to item number seven. Madam Clerk.
Discussion and possible action to appoint a town council member to fill a vacancy caused by the resignation of Eric Dahl, who will serve until the first council meeting following the date of the 2020 general election, November 9th, 2020.
Thank you. So because of the resignation, and knowing that during August, we take the first meeting off, and also in July, it was my desire to, and there was only two people running for this one particular slot, obviously, there was a high, high, high probability that we'd come up with a winner. And the intent was to have that person, which is also on our consent agenda tonight for canvassing the elections with the numbers, to appoint that person until the general election is finished, because we run a nonpartisan election. If you get enough votes during the primary, then you are automatically elected. So Ms. Morales was the clear winner from that time. So we are, well, at this point, I will be entertaining a motion to allow her to be appointed. And if agreed upon, then we'll be swearing her in. She'll be taking the dais, and then at the end of the canvassing of the general election, she'll be re sworn in for the balance of the two-year term, along with the four other candidates who went through for the four-year term. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'm going to appoint Debbie Morales to fill the vacancy of the resignation of Eric Dahl for the reference.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations. So we will move to item number eight. Madam Clerk.
Administration of the Oath of Office to a newly appointed council member.
Thank you. At this time, Judge Abaliz and Ms. Morales, would you please come forward? And our town magistrate, Magistrate Maria Abaliz, will administer the oath of loyalty, the loyalty oath of office. Now you know why we've been off a month and a half. You can tell.
I am begging you.
Deborah Morales.
I, Deborah Morales. Do you solemnly swear or...
I solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and law of the state of Arizona.
The Constitution and law of the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Revolution.
Revolution.
And rules of the Town of Salerita.
And rules of the Town of Salerita.
And that I was there true faith and willing.
That I was there to faith and willing.
To the faith.
To the faith.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I was faithfully.
And that I was faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the news.
Discharge the news.
As council member.
As council member.
Of the Town of Salerita, Arizona.
Of the Town of Salerita, Arizona.
According to the depth of my ability.
According to the depth of my ability.
To help me God, which is what I aspire.
To help me God, which is what I aspire.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Rachel will hug. There's a, we'll take a one-second break while she signs some paperwork and make it official. Now, one other requirement for her serving is all of those people in the back, they have to come to every meeting. We will attend. And now you come up here. Yeah, go over there, Judge. She can do some waves, something about. Sure. They may not stay. So all the...
All the family.
All the family, why don't you come gather around?
Give her her flowers.
It's probably Debbie, and Anna, and Tia, and all kinds of...
I think the one on the end should come around this side, like, or if you're trying.
Can everybody look at Ricky? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, then go around the wall. Yeah, you can go behind the screen, there's a walkway. And that's a good council, new council person. She's bringing her flowers. So we appreciate that.
What my daughter is.
Oh, okay. And... You have to move the microphone to you. Then if you see the red light, that's a bad thing. Okay. Would you like to say a couple words before you move on?
Everybody left? Can you guys hear me?
No, push the little button there in the bay. The red light's on, you can't hear you. So you want to...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to all of you guys, especially those of you who supported me. This campaign was kind of different. There was a lot of distance because of COVID, but I'm honored to serve our community. I'm honored to serve with all of you guys, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we move to item number nine, which is called to public. At this time, any member of the public is invited to address the town council on any issue which is on tonight's consent agenda or any issue which the town council can likely act upon at a future meeting. Pursuant to Arizona Open Meeting laws, the council may not discuss the items, but individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who've addressed the council, may ask staff to review the matter, or may ask the matter to be placed on a future agenda. And I have one speaker card so far this evening, and it's Mr. Alan Jennings. If you come up to the podium. And I think you, you know the lights, the green, the yellow, and the red.
They'll mess me up anyway.
Okay.
And the toggle switch to your right will raise the volume.
Yeah.
Because the mic is turned on with the judge.
May I be in?
Yes.
Okay. So I've come here to request that the town council, at town authority, open an investigation into the mayor's abuse of his power to support the illegal refusal to comply and undermine the county's health regulations. On June 19th, Mayor Tom Murray used the position of mayor to make the following statement: Crucial that we make sure people are not confused by what they've read or heard. For example, today's resolution adopted by Pima County's Board of Supervisors says it applies throughout Pima County, including within incorporated areas, but state laws clear that it does not apply in cities and towns. This is a blatant false statement. And Tom Murphy has hit the critical stand as a parent from reading the text of the law he cited. The city or town council shall consider the ordinance, and if the council finds that the subject matter of the ordinance is either not a matter of local concern or governed by an existing city or town ordinance, the council shall approve the resolution by, by resolution, the application to be enforced in the city. So the mayor is violating the very ordinance he seeks to use against the county. The statute clearly states that the council is required to, first, consider the matter, provide judgment, that is, first. Second, not a matter of local concern. Or, third, governed by an existing city or town ordinance. And his disingenuous leadership is not considered the matter, nor brought it before council. As the town is prepared to spend hundreds of thousands in federal grant money, this is a matter of local concern, and the town currently has no existing town ordinance. Though this is evidence of the mayor's level speech in sowing discord and undermining the government while claiming to support it, this is actually immaterial to the legal issue involved. The statute, as it so clearly states, applies to ordinances. As stated in plain English in the county resolution, finding 11, Pima County, through both the Board of Supervisor and its Health Department, has broad authority to take action to protect the public health and safety of all Pima counties and inhabitants, including authority to adopt and enforce regulations necessary for public health and safety of the inhabitants. Finding 12, the adoption of regulations requiring Pima county inhabitants, including those in cities and towns in Pima county, to where face coverings, when in public spaces where adequate physical distancing cannot easily maintain, it is necessary to protect the public health and safety of Pima county's inhabitants. While these provisions may be ordinances, they must be rules, regulations, and orders and decrees, and so forth, which Arizona Reside Statute 11251 does not apply. As stated in plain, as stated in Arizona Reside Statute 36, Section 8, 183, 2A, each county shall investigate the cause of sicknesses and make regulations necessary for the public health and safety of inhabitants.
You can wrap up if you'd like.
Okay. I just now ask the staff to make their request to investigate the proper corrective and punitive measures to the fullest extent.
Thanks. That's all the cards that have been submitted. Does anybody else like to address the council? If not, I will declare the call to the public closed. And we will move to number, item number 10, which is council, town manager, a brief summary of current events. Just do it all.
Thank you, mayor and council. I have just a few things that I would like to bring to your attention. One of those is that we have now opened our sports fields for reservations. Now, these are kind of on, I don't want to say limited use, but we are controlling the number of teams or people that can be on the field at any given time. And so that's the way we're handling that. And then organized teams can begin to come in for reservations for those filled after Labor Day on September 8th. Ramadas are now, we're also taking reservations for Ramadas for groups of 10 or less as well. Also, I'll let you know that planning is in the works for Halloween. We won't call it Spooktacular, because it won't be the same as our traditional Spooktacular, but we are considering and planning for a drive-through with families in their cars, wherein they will pass the trunks, the decorated trunks, and go through other decorated areas. I think that there's a haunted forest and some other kind of decorated area as well. And at the end of their drive, they'll receive a bag of candy for those that are in the vehicle. So we're planning on doing something fun on, for that event. Also, we continue to recruit for volunteers to help us do an inventory of trees in our community. We will be having a training on August 29th, and then we'll do the inventory, the actual inventory, on three different Saturdays in September, on the 12th, 9th, 10th, and 26th. So if anybody is interested in helping us out with that, volunteering their time to count trees, they can register online or get ahold of our Parks and Rec Department.
What type of training? I'm just curious. To count trees?
I don't think we're out counting cactus. Also, I wanted to just give you a brief update on the Business Safety and Recovery Program. Of course, we know that the town allocated $600,000 to, for a grant program wherein our local businesses could apply up to $10,000 to assist them in their preparations and expenses associated with COVID. And so we currently have 22 businesses that have been awarded for a total of $211,000. And so there's, I just wanted to get that out there. And I think that's all I have for you for now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so, sure.
Kelly, so can we just not have enough applicants? Because it seems like they would have more and have already distributed more. And I saw we reposted it, right? Yeah.
We did. We, and we changed the rules a little bit on it, too, wherein those that actually received through the federal government, the PPP program, if they received funds for those initially, we were not allowing them to participate in our program. But we eliminated that restriction. And so even though they've received the federal PPP through the Federal Cares Act, they are eligible for our program. And so I think it's, we just want to continually get the word out to our businesses. I know that those that have received it are very grateful. We get calls in the town hall letting us know how grateful they are for that extra money. And so we'll, we'll just keep trying to get the word out, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to talk to the council today.
Well, good job to you, and I'll start on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Let me give you a test, Kelly. Is a saguaro a tree?
Not in our tree inventory program. But it might be a tree.
Now, you're, you're not doing too well here, Kelly. You haven't gone through the training. Okay.
I'm just still getting down now and it's taking sense.
I, Ms. Mayor, I was pleased to be reviewing these stats this morning from the county in regard to COVID-19. And while it's, I'm not at all pleased with the fact that COVID-19 continues to be a major problem, what I was delighted for was the fact that there were 1,499 cases in the first two weeks of August, 17 of which were in Salerita and Green Valley. And I think that's a very good indication that we are improving here a little bit. And that's actually down a few from the previous week. But I'm delighted that the county is providing those weekly statistics and keeping us informed of what is happening. But I did want people to know that our incident rate in Salerita and in Green Valley is what I would call low, given the total amount of 1,499. Thank you. Thank you. What have you done since the last meeting? You have anything to report?
No.
No? Okay. I just had a couple of things. You know, just appreciation to the Park and Rec Department for the continuing drive-in. That, it's been, you know, a really great addition during these times. So kudos unto them. A shout-out to all of our area churches. I think Common Ground Church kind of led the effort. A couple weeks ago, participating, they had a prayer night at all the different facilities, parks around the town, just prayed over us and our town. So I was happy to participate in that. Unfortunately, we had to cancel our State of the Town, which usually happens in September, because it was difficult to secure a place because of COVID. But I just wanted to do a shout-out to the Chamber for their collaborative effort, working with us on a ongoing basis and scheduling that. We're going to do something a little different in a video branding, kind of a marketing thing that will be rolling out before the end of the year. So you might be asked, not TikTok now. Oh, I'm in. Just talking to it. But you might be contacted by Terry, Omar, or Robert to participate in that. So keep, keep an eye out for that. And just, it was great to see the chief here today. Both chiefs, actually, almost sitting next to each other. There was quite an interesting fire, 9/19, that just shows the cooperative relationship between the Green Valley Fire, Rural Metro, and our police department. And, and also the, you know, the great job Nixel does to keep our citizens up to date as that's going on. So just kudos to all of our first responders for getting all of that today and getting it under control. And I, and I understand MPA, Metropolitan Pima Alliance, is doing a new immersion program? I don't know all the details. But it's going to, first time they're doing it with a small group, and one of our own, Anna Cassidy, in planning it. It's going to be part of that. So that was really, yeah, that was really nice. So please, hats on, congratulations for that participation. I think it'll be beneficial for our, our staff and our town to get that type of information back. So thanks. Before I end, I'll do the reminder, our next meeting is September 28th. We're not going to have a meeting, a special meeting in September. It'll be 28th. And look for an email for Terry. Might be, it's already out, too. Maybe be here a little bit early. Next, we move to item number 11, which is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion carries. And Councilmember Egbert, I should have asked you if you had anything to report. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I would have dumped in if I had something. I agree with much of what you said, and I just wanted to welcome Debbie as well to the council.
Thank you. It's just a phone sitting in front of us, so I apologize. It's easier to... It's easy to forget. There's someone on the other end of that.
You just put a wave on it.
Yeah, that, that would have helped me. Now, we come to item number twelve, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding an application for a Series Seven liquor license by Pizza Hut number zero-three-six-nine-eight-one, located at one-eight-eight-five-zero South New Valles Highway, Green Valley, Arizona, eight-five-six-one-four, within the incorporated limits of the town status.
Thank you. And as she stated, this does require a public hearing, so at this time, I will declare the public hearing open. And if anybody would like to address this, agenda item, public hearing is open, and you can come to the podium. Seeing no movement, I will declare the public hearing closed, and at this time...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I just tell you a little bit about that?
Sure, if you would like.
Thank you. Pizza Hut, one-eight-eight-five-zero South New Valles Highway, applied for an owner transfer of Series Seven beer and wine license. The Series Seven license is a quota license available only through the liquor license lottery or for purchase. Once issued, the liquor license is transferable from person to person and/or location to location within the same county, and allows the holder both on and off sale retail premises. The current license held by Pizza Hut of Arizona Incorporated was sold to the new owner of the establishment, Delight Foods of Arizona Incorporated. The license allows the beer and wine retailer to sell and serve beer and wine only, no other liquors allowed, primarily by individual portions to be consumed on the premises and in the original container for consumption on or off the premises. Required notice was posted for twenty days, no comments were received, all fees are being paid, staff has reviewed the application, and there are no objections to the issuance of the license. So, we are requesting the council economic recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding the license proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. And in light of not allowing you to read that, I'll reopen the public hearing. And seeing no movement, I will close the public hearing once again. And now, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to submit to the AD panel to see your recommendation of approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to item number thirteen, Madam Clerk.
Samtech, Santa Rita Advanced Manufacturing and Technology Center for construction updates.
Thanks. And Mr. Gonzalez, Victor Gonzalez, our Economic Development Director, will present this item.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think I'm in between yourself and dinner tonight, so we'll just take the next two to three hours to talk about that. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, I do just want to start by just publicly thanking the council and also our town manager, Mr. Kelly Udall. You know, I've had the privilege of working in economic development now for over twenty years in various communities, and I've yet to see this kind of project that this town has undertaken in my years throughout economic development. So, I'm very privileged and blessed to have been part of this project, so I thank you all for, for making that commitment, as well as the individual departments that were involved in this project. Truly, many, many departments and individuals touch this project in one way or another. And as we move along in maybe what we can call Phase Two of this project, finding tenants, there's going to be certainly those same departments involved. And finally, thanking our project architects, BWS architects, and the contractors, Parker Contracting. So, we actually set out, I was looking at the file, right, and just reminiscing the history of the project, and really it was about seven or eight years to, to the date that we all came together and started to lay out the blueprint for economic development, if you will, back then, and then that fed into the town's strategic management plan and so on and so forth. But really, one of the things that we identified seven, eight years ago was, we wanted to move beyond being a bedroom community. And an item that was identified was establishing employment centers. And I think we can stand here this, this evening and say that we've, we've arrived. What we saw as an impediment, seven years ago, of not having an employment center, we now have one with, with Samtech. And so, we should all feel very proud about that. Overall, the community is, is moving along nicely with the hospital, additional residential development and commercial development. Samtech is really going to start to help us be more of a diversified community. So, I want to take some time to give you an update to, to the project itself. Certainly, it's been a long process. Anytime you deal with federal funding, it's a long process. And so, I wanted to just highlight the construction process itself and, and some notable items within the last several months as we began construction and now wrapping up construction. So, we began construction of the project in, in October twenty nineteen, seems like ages ago. And we know that the project itself started, you know, almost two, three years ago with the initial application for, for Samtech, the pre-application, the full application, and there's been various checkpoints with council throughout this, this process of the project. The project itself and the construction management, so you have a sense of, of, of the team that was engaged throughout the construction of the project, really was a combination of, of the architect and staff. So, BWS, the architects, were the construction management organization or team. So, they really were coordinating with the contractor on a daily basis, providing clarification whenever there was a need for clarification on the architectural design, as well as the technical pieces with the subcontractors. Public Works was involved, interacting with the architect as well as the contractor. A number of, of folks have been involved. Deborah Einwick started off as being our point of contact. Erie has now taken over that role since the beginning of the year, and certainly Carlos Swadis has been on the Public Works side, if you will, interacting with the architect and the contractor. On the procurement side, Cheryl Deskey, our procurement officer, making sure that we're complying with the federal requirements from when we went out to bid for the project, right, making sure that we're adhering to the federal procurement requirements, and throughout the project, making sure that we're in line with the vacant and all the other stipulations that the federal government requires of us on a federal project. And then finally, economic development, just hovering, if you will, and, and just, you know, inserting ourselves as, as we needed to, you know, clarify, articulate, translate, what have you. So, it's, it's been a, a very, a very enjoyable process. Overall, we were meeting on a weekly basis, this core team of the architects, contractor, Public Works, economic development, procurement, over, over the course of the, of the project. All in all, there were about thirty-four meetings that, that we all took part on a weekly basis, not counting the interaction that you have within those, in between those weekly meetings. So, right now, we're pretty much wrapping up the project. I did note on the slides, final completion estimated to be in September, but as of this morning, some, some feedback that we see, we received from the contractor and the architect, it looks like it'll be at the end of this week that the punch list items will be completed. So, the core and the shell of the building is completed, and what's taken place over the last two to three weeks is just the housekeeping minor items that the contractor was, was cleaning up for us. I do want to share with you some notable items. We are still obviously looking at the overall cost of the project, you know, throughout the life of a construction project, you have change orders, and there's slight fluctuation in, in what is the project budget. But just some things to point out, the contract itself, the construction contract that was awarded in October, if you recall, we had an estimated design cost that, you know, we were very fearful of because of the unknowns of the construction world and elevated prices due to the labor. But when we awarded the construction contract back in October twenty nineteen, it was about thirty-six percent less than the estimated design cost. So, that was good news for us back in October. As I've been tracking the change orders, yes, there's some slight variation in what is the awarded construction contract, but we are certainly treading very good in terms of our total costs. We have completed the EDA, the project within EDA's required completion date. So, EDA essentially gave us about forty-eight months from the date of award to complete the project, and we're well under that forty-eight month mark. So, very, very pleased with, with that progress. We've met all the special conditions. Overall, there's about twenty-four items in the special awards. So, exciting news when you get the award letter from EDA, but along with that award letter is all the special conditions you have to meet. All in all, there were about twenty-four items, and we've, we've met those, those special conditions as of today. So, in the month of September, as we look ahead, we'll be working closely with EDA to close out the project, to issue what would be our, our final reimbursement, as well as any other items that EDA may need clarification from us. We have received to date from EDA about two-point-five of the three million of, of the EDA grants. So, our, our final reimbursement will be a little less than half a million that will be submitted to EDA. So, we get to what is the, the best part, and that's the, the building itself. This was drone footage from about July tenth. You go out there now, the landscape has been put in place for the project. And for me personally, this project became a reality when the address was assigned. Something about an address assigned to a project really just brings it to life. So, if you're curious about what the address is, it's sixteen-two-twenty South Black Canyon Drive. So, it's a nice, it was a nice day, celebratory day when, when the address was issued by Puma County. Not a whole lot of pop and circumstance, you just get the address and that's it. But for me, it really made the project a, a reality. The project site, just to refresh our memory, sits on about three-point-seven-six acres. There, the, the building is, interesting fact, the building we proposed early on was thirty-two thousand square feet, and we actually got thirty-two thousand thirty square feet. So, that's the gross square footage. Not sure where that extra thirty square feet comes from. Obviously, as we got into, as the architects got into the design of the project and making it aesthetically pleasing, adding some curvature, adding some, you know, some divide in the facade, you probably get the extra thirty square feet. So, so interesting fact on that. And then ninety-six parking spaces is what we have on site. The site is designed for an additional fifteen spaces that would give us a total of one-hundred-and-eleven. But what's right there onsite and striped is ninety-six parking spaces. We feel that that's adequate parking for the type of tenants that we are going to, to attract. Just again, another view of, of the building, and just the views, the way the architect designed the building itself, taking advantage of the, of the views towards the Santa Rivas. Just want to spend a little bit of time to share with you illustratively what the configuration of the space can look like within the thirty-two thousand square feet. Really, there's about three different scenarios that we can configure the space to. EDA requires this to be a multi-tenant facility, so it has to be at least two tenants. The facility itself and the systems that support the tenants, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, are designed to serve three tenants. So, what you see on the upper corner, option A, is, is really the straightforward subdividing the space into, into three spaces, really what we imagined early on to be and what it is now, how you can configure that to the three tenant spaces. Tenant number three, which is the larger section, is about nineteen thousand square feet. Tenant number two, the middle space, is about five thousand square, square, five thousand square feet. And then tenant number one, on the other end, could be designed to accommodate nine thousand square feet. So, we have a lot of flexibility. If you take a look at option B, as well as option C, we purposely left out what is a dividing line between tenant number two and tenant number one. So, illustratively, you see a line there, but if you walk the space, there's no wall. Again, to give us added flexibility if we need to make use of tenant space two and tenant space one. The space between tenant space two and tenant space three, that is a structural wall, so that line that you see on option C is a, a structural wall. But there are places where we can punch out sections of that wall to allow us to, to use or to configure the building to what you see option B. So, a lot of, a lot of flexibility and scenarios that we can play with depending on the, on the tenant that we have. So, this is just an interior shot of, of the ceiling. This is inside what would be the larger space, tenant number, tenant space number three, where you have about nineteen thousand square feet. So, this is looking towards La Canyada. Just some facts about it, it's about sixteen feet, the clear ceiling height. And again, the way this was designed was to really take on and have this curb uphill, as well as maximizing the, the views that we have looking towards, towards the... Again, just another view of the larger space, now looking towards the backside. It's just a big open warehouse. A lot of social business can happen in nine thousand square feet, so if we're able at, if we had to, I know we'll get the capacity in one of the council meetings, then we can, we can move forward to, to the Samtech. This is a, a view of what is the, the middle space and, and the opposite end of the larger space. Again, looking towards the back area, you can see that we have the, the ad grade roll outdoors for the shipping and delivering activity that, that can take place. And again, the, the individual spaces have been designed and have been, and are now being served by three H D S T units, one for each space. So, what is the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, all have been designed and metered to be able to serve three unique spaces, giving us again, added flexibility to be able to attract three tenants. So, let me just share with you post-construction, what's going to take place between really going into September and the foreseeable future, the question about the maintenance and operation, who's managing that, and so on and so forth. So, we, obviously, the town maintains and operates Samtech, and we'll, we'll do that for the foreseeable future. One of the special condition requirements from EDA was that we operate the facility as a light industrial facility for the next twenty years. And so, we'll, we'll do that as, as stated by, by EDA. Public Works Department and their staff will initially be responsible for the day-to-day facility management duties until tenants are secured. So, it'll be managed like, like Town Hall or any other facility that the town owns and operates. And so, we'll, we'll be out there on a daily basis, making sure things are, are okay. When we do have a tenant secured, the town will be responsible for what is the structural, electrical, ma- structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, fire systems, serving the premise and, and the common area. So really what has to do with, with the shell building, maintaining the shell building and the common areas outside. The tenants will be responsible for, for the lease premise, so the interior, whatever that square footage is, and keeping their space in good order, condition, and if need be repaired, cosmetic items within their space. The, the lease rates, so you have a sense, is going to be a, a triple net structure. So tenants will be responsible for their portion of utilities and then the proportional percentage of the common area cost. Very straightforward lease structure, if you will, very typical of, of industrial lease transaction in which you have the lease rate based on, on a triple net basis. Right now, we're marketing the facility by way of our, our brokers, CB Richard Ellis out of Tucson, and we're marketing the facility at eighty-five cents per square foot, very comparable for a facility like this. I would venture to say that you can't find anywhere in Tucson or Pima County a, a deal like this, simply because this is a new facility, it's CMU, and, you know, we were classified really as, as a Class A flex R and D. So it'd be hard for us to find a new-built facility at, at these rates in, in Pima County or in the state as a whole. Finally, the last slide, so we can all get to dinner. Want to just give you an update as to what we're doing to promote the facility. Over the last several months, we've, we've been as active as we can be in, in promoting the facility through business attraction and marketing. Since the month of, of March, we've done a direct email campaign to tune up about seven-hundred-and-fifty individual businesses that we've contacted through a Samtech e-blast. And the way that works is, it's kind of finding a needle in a haystack, but in any event, you have to go through that process to try to identify prospective tenants. So as an ED staff, what we do is we, we source various industry lists, whether it's an event, whether it's a trade association, and we do an exercise with data mining, identifying the type of business that will be a fit for our community and is comparable to, to the assets that we have. And by way of that exercise in data mining, we then establish what is our, our prospect list that we do some additional research and filtering and at the end of the day do an e-blast to them. So a little bit of a kind of needle in a haystack exercise, but it's, it's a profit that's necessary to market the facility. So we've done over seven-hundred-and-fifty individual emails over several, the course of several months. We also have visited with the Arizona Commerce Authority Business Attraction Team. So HCA has a business attraction team of about eight to ten individuals that are both in-state and out-of-state. So the, the Zoom call that we had included representatives from California, Northern and Southern California, from Midwest, from the South and back East. So it gave us an opportunity to really promote Samtech and get it in front of their business attraction team. We've developed a webpage, landing page for, for Samtech. So, you know, the e-blast that we send out, we direct people to, to the landing page to gather more information about the project. And then going into the month of September, we're going to be working with CBRE to develop a promotional video, really a virtual video that we can put out there for, for folks to, to view both the exterior and the interior of, of the building. We also have some activities that we're looking to line up, possibly a broker tour, so inviting the industrial brokerage community in, in Southern Arizona to tour the facility so they can go out and then tout the facility itself. And then at some point, you know, we're hopeful that we can have a, a celebratory ribbon-cutting in the near future where we can invite all the organizations that have been involved in this project. If you recall, Arizona Commerce Authority provided us with a, with a grant through the sewer extension. Freeport-Mackay Foundation has been a very, a very supportive supporter of the project. And it goes without saying, we love to have EDA come out and, and tour the facility and see the project firsthand. Finally, I do want to share that we have had two site visits to, to the project in the last week or so, so two visits by two individual companies, prospects, you could say, and it's always good to have people come out and, and kick the tires, if you will. So I think now, moving forward, with the facility being finished, our ability to, to show the facility, I'm hopeful that we can gain some traction and be able to soon have that facility housed with, with the type of business I know that we all aspire early on in this project to have in, in our community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, remember with Council members to answer any questions.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I was going to piggyback off of, thanks to Freeport and HCA because, you know, they were early supporters. I know the U of A Tech Park, you know, has, you know, helped and I think guided us in some ways. It was a medium when Bruce Reich was the executive director a couple of years ago, and they were interviewing and they asked him if he was worried about us, and he said, no, you know, it's, it's great to have, you know, more than one area to, you know, be actually marketing. So I always appreciated their positive support. Will there be any, if there's any money left over at all out of the EDA grant, are we able to use any of that for tenant improvements, TIs, or is that something separate, a separate fund that you have to utilize for that?
Name, we're for members of the council, so nobody will be left over from the grant. It's all been allocated
I tried, I tried.
To the project itself. We do have opportunities by way of leases, revenues will be generated, and I think there is some ability for us to, to reinvest into economic development programming. I don't recall the fine print, but in concept, EDA does encourage the municipalities and the project owner to, whenever there's a revenue source from an EDA project, to reinvest that into economic development activities and programs.
Big thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Vic, Vic, you, you get a lot of feedback from the brokers, our broker. Could you just summarize kind of briefly what they're reporting in terms of pros and cons in response to the project? I know there are a lot of firms that are not interested at all, so there wouldn't be. But just give us a feel for how the project is being responded to from brokers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would say that the, the only con to this project would be the, the distance. For, for some reason or another, the, you know, the openness that is between us and, and the city of Tucson causes this, I guess, perception of, of being in rural. So I think the con would be the, the perception of being at a distance from what would be downtown Tucson. But quite frankly, we all know that's, that's not an issue. There are more pros to the project, it's a new facility. The feedback we received from the two site visits was very encouraging in that the curb presence that the facility has is going to attract a sophisticated type of tenant, a tenant that is in the high-tech sector that, you know, part of their business model is to generate some level of foot traffic for their customers, whether it's a customer that's from the public sector or a customer from, from a governmental agency. Another pro that, that we received from the site visits was the ability to come in and have a clean slate where they can come in and, and design and build out the space to, to their liking. So the feedback to date has been a con, the perception of distance and being away from core services in Tucson, but I would say the, the pros outweigh the cons at this point.
And make sure we keep that smart asset rating that we just received is the, what the most affordable and stable housing market in the state of Arizona, the only one in Southern Arizona, so you can share that real
It's a shame we don't have the smart corridor working at the present time because that is going to be a major factor in the future of that building, as also the fact that Tucson is only three miles from, from that building. And yes, they're not developed that far down, but they're going to be, and it's coming south more rapidly as we speak.
Well, to that point, are we reaching out at all to our Mexican friends because of the I-19 corridor, the Sonora corridor, as a potential? Because I know, you know, you've done a lot of work and we've visited Mexico on a number of occasions to kind of promote us on the I-19 corridor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have, part of the endeavor to subdivide, to break out the seven-hundred-and-fifty e-blast that we've done to individual businesses, a good number of them include the Maquiladoras sector in Mexico. So our, our prospect list is representative of the Maquiladoras sector, and so we did some initial research and data filtering of the plant in Nogales and where their US-based operations are located. We cross-checked that information and identified that correlation with our US counterpart, and we reached out to them. We also, to give you a little bit more information of what is representative of, of the seven-hundred-and-fifty, we also have in there the mining technology sector, another sector that's representative of the e-blast and outreach that we've done, optics industry as well, and then renewable energy. About two weeks ago, we did an outreach to about a hundred-and-fifty companies in the renewable energy sector that are based in California. And so that's a hundred-and-fifty out, businesses that we've outreach are representative of, of a number of sectors that we believe are compatible to Pima City and that would, you know, would, would, would be attracted to, to this type of facility.
Mr. Mayor, before I leave, I do want to congratulate you. I think it's an outstanding job and outstanding example of how various, I won't say it's private-public, but in some ways, in many ways it is, and it's an outstanding example, an example that we're certainly going to be using more and more as we move into the future. Private-public funding is going to be the key. But you've done a great job and your staff has, and I, I certainly congratulate you on that.
Thanks, I concur. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to again say a great job. I drove by the building for the first time since this day, and it does, it looks amazing. The curb appeal is amazing. There could have been tenants in it already, you know, apart from the street, you know, driving by. It looks, it looks amazing and yeah, I concur, you did a great job. I mean, I know you had help, but you really spearheaded this and took it on and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? No. We're moving on to adjournment. As a reminder, that the twenty-eighth is our next meeting. I hope everybody has a safe and healthy Labor Day, a weekend celebration which is coming up. I can't believe we're going to be into September already, two years are sort of flying by.
We'll get school.
And hopefully we'll get schools open really soon.